Here is that they can control. They can't control what they're spending on the bond indebtedness. But it's not a huge amount, but it's pretty large. $158,000 on island maintenance costs. That, I'd really like to see that reduced. We all want the beautified, beautiful Big Beaver corridor, but $158,000, I really don't know what all that covers, but that's a chunk of money we could probably do without spending.
Perhaps Mr. Miller knows the actual scope of work that that would incorporate.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Well, that is for the maintenance of the medians and right-of-way areas for the full length, which is along Big Beaver, which is approximately four miles long, for long cutting, maintenance of the landscape, and irrigation.
If I may, and not to put Mr. Miller on the spot. If you were to take a look at other areas in the city that have medians, on a linear foot basis or a, you know, per 100 yards basis, what would the enhanced maintenance be in the DDA versus another area where we have medians on a major street?
I don't know. I apologize.
Um...
Maybe, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman, I mean Mayor Protim Curwin.
Since you sit on a DDA, Madam Mayor, perhaps you could share Councilmember Fleming's suggestion at the next meeting.
Yes, I can. I do know that we've discussed this, though, in previous years when we were looking at the budgetary figures, and the members of the DDA felt that one of the reasons why the DDA was formed in the first place was to keep up the area at a level where there would be reinvestment in the community. And if you notice that there are several buildings that have been built on Big Beaver in the past few years, there's a doctor's office, there's some other things that have gone in, some other planned things that are going to be occurring. And one of the reasons that they felt that that keeping of the median area does add to the value, they felt that a lot of the people who come to Troy, that just come to that area, look at that, and if you compare it to the communities to our east or our west, you'll see that they've tried to keep up that, too. In fact, in Sterling Heights right now, they're doing fixing of the pavement. They're in another county, they're in McComb County, and they're behind the fixing of the pavement that we did in, on Big Beaver here in Oakland County, so they're trying to catch up with us. Yes. Ms. Councilwoman Fleming?
Mayor, I would appreciate you talking to the DDA and see if they can reduce that. We certainly want it to be done nice and attractive. We don't want to go without mowing, but if there's some way they can reduce that expense from $158,000, that's just a lot of money. We need to save that money for, to pay off debt.
I will certainly speak about it, and I'm sure staff members will also at the next meeting. It will be in June. Okay. Any others on this, on the Downtown Development Authority fiscal budget?
Mayor?
Councilman Howlack?
Since you are in the DDA, perhaps you could explain to us why the Downtown Development Authority spent valuable money on the Rochester and Big Beaver Road intersection and park, and now we're expecting that the DDA is going to run out of money in two years?
My explanation is that that plan and proposal for that area of improvement, some of which was done because of the Act, which caused us to do the red pavement because of the crossing, you know, because of the, what is it called again? ADA Act? But the plan for that area was at least five years in the works for developing that as one of the areas where people come, because they come off the expressway there on Rochester Road at I-75 and come along that way. And there were plans in the works for beautifying and improving traffic flow in some areas, and that's why that occurred. Mr. Zerlag, would you like to add to that?
I would like to defer to Mr. Miller, who's in charge of most of our capital projects in the city, to see if he would like to add something to Mayor Schilling's comments.
The only thing I would add is that the project was up and going and funded and contracted before what I would call the crash.
So it was at least five years in the works, the actual plan to do it, yeah. Further questions?
Mayor?
Councilman Howlack?
Well, you know, the issue is, you know, it's, you know, some, I think it was Jim Savage came up to us, and he said he was concerned about the way government spends money, and it really was all levels of government. And so I think it comes down to whether you have an LDFA, a Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, a Downtown Development Authority, a library, a general fund, whatever, you need to actually be able to justify what you're spending your money on. And, you know, people have been complaining and raising concerns about that project for years, and yet it still happened. Certain improvements needed to happen, but not, you know, you spent about 10 times what you needed to in order to make it look pretty. Now, I'll tell you what looks really, really ugly is when you have a bond default. You know, people, you know, you can have the prettiest medians in the most beautiful park that nobody uses at Rochester and Big Beaver, but if your DDA defaults, or if the city defaults on the golf course bonds, that's going to give us the black eye. Everybody remembers Orange County, everybody remembers Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, everybody remembers Jefferson County, Alabama, defaults or near defaults. People don't necessarily think of, you know, cities like Rochester, Michigan, or Troy, Michigan in that way, and I don't want to change that.
I'm sure that none of the members of the DDA want to go into default. Absolutely positive that none of them do, and we'll find a way to not have that happen. Further discussion on the vote? Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howlack?
No.
Curwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-6 is approval of the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority proposed fiscal year 2011-12 budget. Mayor Protim Curwin?
The Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has adopted and recommends that City Council approve its proposed fiscal year 2011-12 budget. Now therefore be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority's annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012. Second.
Moved by Mayor Protim Curwin, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion, Councilman Fleming?
Mayor, could we ask the city management to address the letter that we received from Mr. Lenevoff dated May 15, inquiring about if money was being used from the revolving loan fund to pay for administrative services in this budget?
Was that letter sent to the staff also?
It was sent to the city clerk, the city attorney, and to Mr. Miller.
Okay, thank you.
On Sunday, May 15.
Just wanted to make sure they had it ahead.
You need a copy of it, or?
Yes. Those funds would be spent for administering the program.
Yeah, there was a question in there, if you look at the last paragraph, Mr. Miller or Mr. Zerlag, and it inquires about the legality of what the funds are being used for, if they're being used for administrative fees, services, and I just want to know if we've, make sure that we're okay.
Mrs. Blom, would you like to address that, since it has to do with legalities?
Again, we received this yesterday, and I've been in court all day today, but I do know that this was a concern. It was my understanding that the budget prepared by management took that money, it's not necessarily in the revolving loan fund, but that it's from other sources, and they can perhaps confirm that, because that would be management's responsibility.
Mr. Zerlag and Mr. Miller?
Yes, the reserve fund does include funds from both the revolving loan fund and other unspent fundings from previous years.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Fleming?
The question is, are those funds, I remember the memo correct, are those funds used to pay for administrative services? And if so, is that proper use of those funds, is all, just trying to get an answer to his question.
From my standpoint, yes, because we'd be administering the program, the loan program.
It covers the cost of administering the program.
Okay, I think it was a legal question, really, though.
Right.
Again, assuming that it's the reserves and not necessarily just strictly revolving loan fund proceeds, then that is correct. I think that Mr. Lenevoff's email assumes that it is all revolving loan fund money, and I think that that is an incorrect statement based on what I've been, the information I've been provided.
Okay, so it's okay.
Further questions on I-6? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Howlack?
I just wanted to comment that I would, I would prefer, if we could actually have a response to this regardless of how the resolution plays out, because I think the operative paragraph here is the proposed 2011-2012 TBRA budget included two revenue items, property tax of $7,953, an appropriation of fund balance of $25,000, and two expenditures, payment to TCF Bank, $7,953, and administrative service for $25,000. The only fund that the TBRA has is the revolving loan fund. Then he says, "There may be a delay from when the property taxes are collected before they are sent to TCF and may reside in a temporary fund, but for all practical purposes," I don't consider that as a TBRA fund, and so on and so forth. He says he also submitted this to management earlier as well and was forwarding this to us, because his replacement hasn't been made, and he's still technically a member of the Brownfield. I'm still uncomfortable with this budget and would feel a lot more comfortable if we had a more thorough response, and I don't think we can do that. Maybe we can at the table tonight.
Further discussion of the motion? Mr. Miller?
We just had an opportunity, Madam Mayor, to talk with Mr. Nash, and he indicated that there was a fund balance in existence prior to the revolving loan fund, and we will review it with finance if adopted, and if there is a problem, we'll have to come back to City Council.
Okay, further discussion? Councilman, brought to me?
If there might be a problem and it might come back, we're meeting on the 6th of June. Is that soon enough to pass this or not?
Mr. Lamarrado, Mr. Zerlag?
I honestly don't know the answer to that question. Hopefully, Mr. Lamarrado does.
Okay, Mr. Lamarrado?
Mayor and City Council, June, the first meeting in June would be fine for this.
June 6?
I just hate reading.
I know.
Me, too.
I do, too. Okay, I move to postpone this item till June 6.
Report.
Moved by the Chair, seconded by Mayor Protim Curwin, that we postpone to June 6. Discussion? The vote on the postponement, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Howlack?
Yes.
Curwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-7 is approval...
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
We neglected to wrote on E-1B.
Pardon?
You postponed the action on the council budget adoption and...
Yes.
Until after E-1A, I mean I-4A, and we missed that, so we need to go back and capture that.
Okay, we'll go back and go to I-7.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protim Curwin?
We're nearly at I-7, and we've had someone waiting for us.
Oh, can we do I-7 and then go to it?
I could, we could, uh...
He likes being here.
I don't think so. So if we... Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If we could do the last of them and that be done.
All right.
Whereas the Troy Local Development Finance Authority has adopted and recommends that the City Council approve its proposed fiscal year 2011-12 budget, now therefore be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves the Troy Local Development Finance Authority's annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012. Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed and read for the Troy Local Development Finance Authority proposed fiscal year 2011-12 budget. Discussion? Councilman Fleming?
Mayor, I look at this, and I know Mr. Rogers and the audience here appreciate your patience, and expenditures indicate operations, these funds, $55,380 going to Automation Alley operations, $171,918 going to Automation Alley building unrestricted. My question is two. One, what did we fund Automation Alley last year compared to what we're doing here? One. And two, what exactly is this building unrestricted, the $171,918 for?
Mr. Zerlag?
Again, I'll deflect to Mr. Miller on this. He's our Secretary of Treasury.
All right, Mr. Miller and Mr. Lamarrado, I see you pulling stuff out.
I do, I don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head, and I think Mr. Lamarrado is looking it up, but last year there was no expenditures for the building, and over time, there were, over a five-year period, there was $250,000 allocated to Automation Alley. There was funding in last year's budget for operations, and then, I believe, for some reason, I remember this, $37,000 in marketing, but we only spent $15,000 of that for the foundation membership. And the purpose of the funding is that, and Mr. Rogers can answer this probably better than I, is that they've had to refinance the building, and they need, like most properties, the value of the building is worth less now than previously, you need to write down that amount to get favorable lending. And, Mr.?
Usually, we don't call on members of the audience when we're in the middle of a thing. Do you need that answer now?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr.?
Lamarrado's looking it up.
Yes.
Last year.
Councilman Slater?
I don't know if it'll help or not, but I was at the meeting when this was discussed, and I was satisfied with that we, Councilwoman McGinnis and I asked that same question, and it was answered very well for us, and we were satisfied that what's proposed is what's needed at this point. Automation Alley can opt out of Troy in 2012, I believe, and they're making a commitment to Troy, and I think Troy's making a commitment to them also. So it was discussed for a while there about the funding.
Well, they chose us when they started to be in Troy because of the location and because of the, many of the members that wanted to be in Automation Alley thought that that was a good location, it was in the smart zone, and it actually, it's worked out well for us. In fact, when I was at the latest Automation Alley expansion, a company that was there that is looking to use their new services talked to me, they wanted to, they want to buy a building in Troy, they don't want to go anywhere else, and they said, "Can the city administration help us with this?" And I said, "Right of way." Yes, I said, "Please call our staff," because that's one of the things we do, is work with businesses that want to come. This is a company from India that wants to be here, and they were very specific about wanting to be in Troy. And so I think it's a plus for all of us, I really do.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Beltramini?
The other thing I would add is, of the Alley's membership, 145 companies are Troy companies, and most of them are growing, high-tech companies, and then we have the whole international business center and the launching pad, if you will, for new startups, and when they see Troy first, it's easy and it's comfortable for those companies to stay here in our community, and that builds property value for us as well. This is actually a very small investment for those increased jobs in our community and the property taxes that go with those improved buildings. Madam Mayor?
Yes, I think Mr. Zerlag's signaling.
On a very, thank you, Your Honor, on a very broad basis or perspective, if we believe that economic development is important to the city of Troy, Automation Alley is hugely successful, and by having Automation Alley in Troy, as Councilwoman Beltramini mentioned, that gives us an edge over other communities. I can have Mr. Rogers stand up, and he'll tell you that he's being courted constantly by other municipalities to have Automation Alley headquartered in their town, so they can use that as part of their economic development initiative, which is what we do at this point in time as well. Please forgive my voice.
Councilman Fleming?
I appreciate Automation Alley. I mean, I'm glad they chose Troy, I'm glad they're still here, but it's still a quarter of a million dollars, so you have to ask the question, and if we're spending more money than we did last year in any area, it begs the question, so I'm not saying it's not value for money, but you have to ask the question. And also know with the LDFA, there's limitations as to where you can spend the money, and just prior to the meeting, I was asking Councilwoman Beltramini, could we use this for roads? Could we do something with roads? She says, "Not within the district." We have the roads, because where roads are in good shape, the sidewalks within the district, so there are limits as to what we can use that money for. She sits on the Board, LDFA, and you're recommending this as well.
Well, Madam Mayor, if I might...
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
The other thing I would say is, and Mrs. Bernardi is exactly right, we can use those funds for roads that help, you know, the smart zone, but Big Beaver and John R., which would be the roads most in need and most wanting, are county roads. They are not our roads, so for us to use those dollars, we'll never get them reimbursed. So let's leave those dollars in our community where they can build and grow and be leveraged. That's, that's the issue there. If it was a city road, I'm sure Mr. Rogers would much rather have a better road in front of his building, but it's not something we can do.
Mayor?
Councilman Howlack?
I would say that, again, I mean, where are we getting the money for the smart zone? A big chunk of it comes from the county, too. A big chunk of it comes from the city. Everybody, everybody is better off with better roads, I can assure you that, especially our road. And at any rate, my concern is that we're utilizing most of the excess reserves that the LDFA has one shot. I could see if you wanted a piece now, maybe a piece next year and a piece the year after, that would be one thing, but my gosh, we're gobbling up almost all of it right away. And the other thing, too, is I would say that if you want economic development, what you want is private investment, and I'll tell you what economic development is. We've got a bank in this, in this city, which could end up becoming one day one of the largest banks in the Midwest called Talmer Bank and Trust, and I believe they have almost $300 million of fresh capital, all private, none of it government. Now that, my friends, is economic development, and we want to make sure that bank doesn't leave, by the way. I would also offer you that, you know, we have the, I do have to thank Mr. Rogers and staff here for providing us the financial statements for Automation Alley. I think, well, one thing we want to do is, if the LDFA and any government is to give Automation Alley money, even though it's not required to, we need to, if you can try to make it as transparent as possible, and I know that you just had an open house, too, which certainly adds in that endeavor, but the concern that I have is we have total public support and revenue of $5 million last year, last fiscal year. Of that, almost $3 million was government grants and contracts, which, you know, Automation Alley is heavily dependent on the government, and, you know, the state of Michigan has this, you know, this venture capital kind of fund that I guess they fund money into you, and apparently that hasn't been going too well, because, you know, there are a lot of businesses that do quite well, and you can fund them with money, and there are others that, quite frankly, you give money and it disappears. I'm concerned about the level of impairments, and also, I'm also concerned about, there's a note in here that says that there's a significant impairment on a note that was given by Automation Alley to one of the members of the Board, and I think that that just smacks of conflict of interest. Transparency means you're transparent top to bottom, and, you know, we need to make sure that, that the conflicts of interest either perceived or in reality are kept to a minimum, especially when, when a note is given to a member of the Board and it's significantly impaired.
Madam Mayor?
Council, yes.
Have I spoken yet?
No.
Okay. So I would like to hear Mr. Rogers, but I think before we go there, I think it's fine if members of council choose to vote no, that's fine. However, some of us will support this resolution and recognize the leadership of L. Brooks-Patterson in building this kind of collaboration, and right here in our city. I think that Councilmember Howlack made reference to perhaps defense contracts and so on. This was an emerging industry that had been ignored, hadn't been recognized as a way to really utilize some of our tool and die companies and some of our skilled workers, and I thought that that was a great innovation. I certainly know and respect the members of the Board who serve at Automation Alley, and we have been a unique beneficiary of many of the, not only services offered through Automation Alley, but the traction and recruitment of businesses to come right here to the city. So I would like to hear from Mr. Rogers, and then I really would like to vote, people can vote however they feel, but I do recognize times tick.
Right, it's counsel's pleasure to hear from Ken Rogers, so I'll call you forward.
I'd like to answer the councilman's questions. He contacted our office today, wanted our financial statement. Our CFO came to see me, and in five minutes, there was a fax going his way. So when you talk about transparency, councilman, I don't know how else to demonstrate it than by the actions we take. Secondly, in terms of creating jobs and delivering value, you mentioned, councilman, that the private sector creating, creating new funding mechanisms, and that there's fault in some of the funding that's given to organizations by the state of Michigan. I'd just say to you that we've invested 20, excuse me, $6 million in companies here locally that started 29 new companies, created over 550 jobs. The bottom line is, in addition to that, attracted $26 million, excuse me, $62 million in additional capital for those companies. So I'd say that's productive. And the last point is, I can't let the cat out of the bag, but I can assure you, by the end of May, there'll be a major announcement on venture capital that will surprise you and everyone else, and the volume of money involved, it'll be in hundreds of thousands, hundreds of million.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rogers, we appreciate it. Further discussion of this item?
Mayor?
Councilman Howlack?
Don't worry, I'll be brief. I just wanted to say, I didn't want my point to be misconstrued. My, the point I was trying to make is, we need to try and wean Automation Alley off of the government funding, because private funding is certainly the way we want to go, because that means that you're being successful, and I think it's a sign of your success if you're being funded by the private industry. You know, as far as whether or not you're as successful as the private industry in venture capital funding, I don't have the information to make that distinction right now, it's a matter of benchmarking, but I, again, I appreciate receiving this, and if we can continue to receive these, my, like I said, I had, I had discomfort with this statement. Included in the seed fund investments for 2010 and 2009 is a note receivable for $250,000 from a company owned by a member of the Board of Directors. During 2008, this note was deemed by management as other than temporarily impaired, and an impairment loss equal to the original note amount of $250,000 was recorded.
I'll answer that. We made an investment in a company, and one of the Board of Director members had an interest in that company, and that was discovered later on, and the bottom line is that efforts, attempts were made at that point to make sure, the best we could discover who the interested parties were in the loans we were making. So I would say that that was an educational experience. We put... We put that right on the line and published that in our, in our findings. So that's certainly not something we're not trying to be transparent about. And I would suggest to you that we're the only, I don't want to repeat that, the only dues-paying technology organization in the state of Michigan. The only one.
Further discussion on this item? The vote, Mrs. Bertha O'Meal?
Councilman McCorwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Halaak?
No.
Council, the motion passes. Is it your pleasure at this point to stop on the items and go back to the budget? Okay. We're going to go back to Resolution B. Would you look at your agenda and on page seven, there's a correction before we move the resolution that, you're welcome, that is here. In the, in the last section, a bit further resolve, the taxes and federal grants information was inadvertently typed on the wrong line. So taxes should be $6,591,000 and federal grants is $1,146,100. Mr. Lamorato corrected that on mine and asked me to pass that on to you all. I'd like to move Resolution B at this time on the budget. Do I have support?
Resolution B?
B. Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve Resolution B. And I'm not going to read all of the data that is there.
But it is available on the web.
It is available, yes, but because due to the hour and unless someone has something they want to question or explain.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Beltramini?
No one wants to see the library funded more than I. However, I, I do have a concern. We, you heard me say earlier, we got where we were by conservative budgeting. And to spend $660,000, almost 670,000 to keep the library open. And, and I was fine with this last week. And let me tell you what changed my mind. I went out to the three-year budget and when Mr. Lamorato said that the funding would be down to 13.1% of the fund balance instead of the 15, that's a $940,000 difference. It's real money. And so that $1 million that my plan was going to use for, wouldn't even work. And, and neither will this $700,000. And I, I understand all of the closing and opening and all of that. But our job is to budget money that we have. And that, almost $700,000, I don't think is money that we have. So I'm concerned about us leaving the library open if we let staff close it at some appropriate time within the next couple of weeks and do what they need to do this year while we've got the money appropriated. And then after an August vote, the signal will be sent that it's either up or down and they can get it back up and running fairly quickly. So I, I'm concerned about that.
But the other thing that could happen is that the money could be appropriated and hopefully the millage would pass, we could continue on with the library. But if it fails, the library could close. We would do a budget amendment. Am I correct, Mr. Lamorato? We'd do a budget amendment and change the allocation?
No, it's here. That's what you're doing.
Mr. Lamorato?
Mayor and City Council, that'd be up to City Council.
We could.
The funding, the funding requested would be funding for the full year of operations with the millage. You're using some fund balance now to bridge that over for three months. You could repay back if that was your, if it were to pass, you could repay back the general fund.
Okay. So even when the millage passes in August, we could have a council resolution to indicate that the amount of money should be repaid back from the amount collected. Is that correct, Mr. Lamorato? We'd have to have a separate resolution. You ready?
Mayor and City Council, that is correct. We would need, if the millage were to pass, we would need a budget amendment in August to account for those fundings. And at that time, you could decide what you wanted to do with the reappropriation of those funds.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Beltramini, you have another question?
No, my concern is if the, but I, I know how we, we fund this if the millage passes. If the millage does not pass, you're down another $660,000. So you're down 2.7 million below your 15% of your fund balance. It's not a little tiny bit of money. That's my concern.
Further discussion on this?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman, who was first? Councilman Corwin or Councilman McGinnis?
I guess we all want to go. We could go in any order.
I can't hear which voice it is. Councilman McGinnis?
I have a question about the 55 hours. Because we have gone, 55 hours is kind of our baseline and has been our baseline this year because we know that, in accordance with state law, that would allow us to continue many of the cooperative-type programs that people may not even realize they're taking advantage of when they're using the library, but they are.
The reciprocity.
So right now, we've talked about a bridge for three months, I think. And that's where we're at now that we've approved it to be placed on the balance ballot for August. But we also have it tied to this 55-hour threshold. And my question would be, we've kind of had some back and forth discussions over the last couple of weeks as, as we've been pondering this issue, again, regarding the library. And I know that we've seen many things come through to us that have indicated that these other libraries and some of these other groups that we've been working with to have that collaboration are not going to allow us to come back into the network for, lack of a more formal term, until we've got sustained funding figured out. So I'm not quite sure if us keeping it over, open for 55 hours during this bridge time is really going to give us the benefit of the things that we, we were previously experiencing. And I don't know if that's something that Kathy Russ can answer for us, but I, we've kind of looped out of many of these subscriptions and interlibrary loan and all of these services that people have come to expect. When we first started talking about this possibility of a bridge to cover keeping the library open until we could have an up and down vote, which will now be in August, I, I don't know if we're actually going to be able to have those things back during this time period. It seems like most of the information we've been receiving through Kathy Russ is indicating that we're not going to be able to have some of these privileges back. So I guess.
You mean the reciprocity with the other libraries?
Right. So I guess I'm just.
Some of them indicated different things depending on what happened tonight. And I think that that maybe have to be, be determined by those groups. They were waiting to see if we were putting it on the ballot. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That was true.
Mr. Lamorato, Mr. Zellig, do you know? I thought in those letters, we, I don't have the letters here, but I'm trying to remember them.
Unfortunately, our expert left.
Okay.
The building. But we can be, we can get back to you tomorrow with any questions that you may have.
I guess if there's a concern about the cost of bridge loan, which I understand. I mean, I think there isn't anything that we've heard tonight that would indicate that the money, any money that we're going to use is going to come from anywhere other than fund balance. Not, not, one out of the seven of us. Any money that we're going to use in any formation is coming out of fund balance. So I guess my question in that extremely wordy statement that I just made would be, are we really getting that much of a benefit if we keep the threshold at 55? If we are not going to be able to utilize some of these things that we've come to expect by keeping the library open at 55 hours, would it be better for us to reduce the number of hours, thus reducing the amount we're going to use from fund balance to bridge it for three months? It's just a question I'm throwing out.
I don't know if reducing hours would, how much that would reduce the budgetary figures. Mr. Lamorato?
Mayor and City Council, I agree with that, mayor, that it is more hinged on if we're closing or not versus the hours we're currently open. So I think as long as we're open at 55, I know there's, could be some issues with the state interstate, interstate book retrieval and so forth, whatever, because of us possibly closing in August or whatever. I know that was a concern, they stopped doing that. We do have some, still some reciprocal agreements with some other cities. But I think the main thing was the 55 hours, that gets us by the state hurdle right now. And also, I think that, that closing of the library is more of an issue with this other reciprocal stuff and all that versus the hours that we're open at this point.
That was my understanding. Mayor McCorwin?
I think that's true. We don't necess, you know, we don't want to leave those in jeopardy, frankly. We did receive the letter from the district library, which is in Rochester Hills. And they, they are depending upon what happens here tonight. I heard kind of some different things. One, Councilwoman Beltramini, I understand the dilemma, believe me, but mentioned earlier that often families are looking for places to locate during the summer, which brings us to the summer usage of the library, which really is for a lot of families. That, you know, I have a concern with narrowing the arrow, hours for a number of reasons, also including the employees who have stayed on. We don't have a lot. I mean, are we five full-time employees now? We're seven, and I don't know what the changes are on that. Many are part-time, and then we do have a whole series of volunteers. But I'm also concerned about, about that. Because if this is in fact a bridge and should our community support, as so many other communities have, this, a millage for dedicated funding so that the library can be sustained, that's the idea. The idea is that we keep in place that structure, which includes some of those staff members, includes that opportunity for all members of our community to use it with and as-is kind of provision. And yet, when people come to look in our fair city, they will see that, yes, we have an operational library right now and a millage being presented to our residents shortly. So there's that. The other thing is, I agree, you know, it, it's just time. People say they want a library. They say they will vote in support. If they do, fine. If they don't, I'm sorry, it simply has to close. What makes this different when we're talking about shaking out the budget as Councilmember Halaak has said, well, we can see what, we can't keep firing 100 people every time to make the kind of strides we have. Yes, we have some fund balance right now, but we've also been eliminating a third of all our employees. I don't think we can keep that going and accrue that kind of thing. Everything from here on out is less people, less services. The library has been a confusing part for many people who come to these meetings and hear the bit about, well, less pansies on the corridor, we could keep the library open. As much as we explain that the general operating funds, that this is a great expense, it is a great expense. It's not bringing, it's bringing in maybe $100,000 in fines, but that certainly isn't going to, to keep it operational and not for years to come, as people have said they want to see. So I will be, be voting in support. And I would like to see the bridge continue despite the cost.
Further discussion? Resolution B?
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
I, I share the same concerns. And really, the only thing that matters in that concern is if it doesn't pass. If it passes, it doesn't matter. It only matters if it doesn't pass. So the way I've looked at it, I'm giving my sole, full support to the library. And I firmly believe that now that it's in August, it's going to be all by itself. It's up and down. It has its best chance that it'll ever have of passing. And I'm going to look at it optimistically. And if we, if we shut it down, people lose jobs. Even during the bridge, we don't know if we're going to get them back or not. So I'm in support of bridging it because I think it's going to pass.
Mayor?
Councilman Halaak?
The, you know, I, I agree with some of the comments that have been made and I disagree with some. But the, a couple of important things. I think that, I think it is important that we have some continuity for our constituents, for the employees, because it's not just full-timers, it's part-timers. Because, you know, if you're no longer employing them, they got to look elsewhere if they want to continue to work. They can't depend on whether or not, you know, we're going to, whatever. So we need to provide that continuity. Also, one of the things that, that's very informative is that, you know, I asked a question earlier in my series of questions that I submitted to management, how many items are in the library collection? Approximately 350,000. This includes every volume, including eBooks, databases, magazines, print materials, DVDs, et cetera, everything. And that's, you know, even if, you know, even if you can't go outside of the Troy library, that is, that's, you know, that's quite an offering. And so, again, if you close it, then people have to go elsewhere. They have to spend $200 or $100 to get a library card elsewhere. We don't want to do that. Also, if, if there's an issue with fund balance in, in 2014, then, you know, then you have an issue of whether or not the tax that you're issuing is enough to support the city that you have. Right now, we don't have a fund balance issue. We have 22.3% fund balance at June 30th projected of this year as a percentage of next year's expenditures. To take some solace in the fact that Sterling Heights, who has a AAA Fitch bond rating, which is actually a step higher than what we have with Fitch, they're a step lower with S&amp;P. They, and their, their, their target for fund balance, undesignated, unreserved, is 10%. They're utilizing, on a budgetary basis this year, 4.5 million. We're only utilizing 2.1 plus this, 445,000. They're going to be down to 8.4% next year, you know, and they still have a good fund rating. So, and they all, and our, by the way, our pension fund is better funded than theirs, too. But, you know, and, and, by the way, what was the defined benefits return on investment in 2010? I know we don't have the actuarial report, but what was the, you know, perhaps I could ask my colleague, Councilwoman Corwin, who's on the pension fund, what that was?
I guess what I'm really trying to figure out is, are we, are we on the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're on the resolution. I'm trying to find the section that Councilman Halaak is asking about.
Mayor, the.
Where is that?
That, that's actually in personal services. And when we were looking at the three-year budget, the actuarial valuation, which one of the major components is the investment turn of the fund, has a major impact on that actuarial report, which in turn has a major impact on personal services. Because as Councilwoman Corwin certainly knows, we took a multimillion-dollar hit in our multi-year budget as a result of the global financial crisis in calendar year 2008. So perhaps you can let us know what the, the rate of return was on the pension fund last year.
Mr. Lamorato?
Mayor and City Council, I believe is around 15%.
And our target, I believe, is 6.5. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so there's a, that difference will be amortized over, what is it, five years?
That's correct. Any gains or losses are amortized.
Right. Multiple layers. It's, it's one of many factors. My point is that there was the comment that was made that, that we don't know this, that, and the other. Well, that's one thing we do know, that unless we want to overfund the pension fund, there's going to have, be a reduction in expenditure. We also know that depending on what we do with our union contracts, there's going to be a change in expenditure as well. Likewise, there's always a differential between what we budget and what we come in at. But I think, no matter how you feel on the tax issue, I think it's important, if there, since there is going to be an August election, that we keep this thing open. since there is going to be an August election, that we keep this thing open through August.
Further discussion of Resolution B?
Mayor?
Councilman Fleming?
I may have other issues with Resolution B. The library is not one of them. I agree that we need to keep this library open. It just is not the prudent thing to do, to close it for a couple of months, putting too many people, you know, disrupting their lives and disrupting the community. I think it's sending the wrong message. The intent of this council is to keep the library open, not to close the library. So I think we're sending the wrong message to close it for a couple of months, so we need to bridge it, and we'll find the money, the money's available.
Further discussion? Resolution B? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameini?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Haralak?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor?
Councilman Haralak?
My no vote is that this budget doesn't include the entire year, I mean, I think it's self-evident. I, I put forward a resolution that included one year of funding, so if it only included three months, I can't support it.
Counsel, now we need to go back to the other items, but I need to take a break. Now, if counsel wants to continue on with Mayor Protam, other people do, too? Okay. Five, five-minute break.
In session. The next item is the ratification. This is one that I spoke to about previous comments about concessions. Ratification of the 2011-2013 Contract and Early Retirement Incentive Program for the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees called AFSME. It is a rather lengthy resolution. And it is with our employees. Yes, Councilman Slater?
I'll move the resolution as printed. I'd like to read it, but it's pretty long and...
It's pretty long. Support.
It is online. And, okay, and it is in the packet here. Okay. Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Mayor Protem Kerwin, that we approve the resolution for the ratification of the contract and the early retirement incentive program for the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltzamini?
I know that they've got leadership in the audience, but I would like to thank our employees for stepping forward and doing this, and management for your hard work to represent everybody's interests in this, and we appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
And thank you for expressing that, Councilwoman Beltzamini, on behalf of all of us. I think we certainly do appreciate our employees, and this group has stepped forward many times and realizes the value of the team effort. So, thank you for expressing that. Okay, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltzamini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrak?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is our contract ratification with the Michigan Association of Police for the 2010-13 and the Early Retirement Incentive Program.
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
Once again, I will move the resolution as printed.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Howrak?
The, I am, well, the one that we just voted on, the AFSME, I was very comfortable with. I thought they've been very proactive and have done a lot. And I know different unions have done different things to assist us. My concern with this contract is, and actually with all of the contracts, and even with any, is with the design of our early retirement incentive program. And I've expressed this here at the table before, that one piece of that, the piece that essentially is the equivalent of engaging in risk arbitrage, where the city is bringing people in from the defined contribution plan, if they elect to, into the defined benefit plan by guaranteeing them, essentially guaranteeing them a 6.5 percent rate of return, because you can't touch that in the private sector. There is definitely, without a doubt, and it's mentioned in the actuarial evaluation, that there is a risk that the defined benefit plan may not be able to achieve those numbers. And if that happens, say, for example, if, oh, I don't know, let's say they don't extend the debt ceiling on the federal debt and everything in this country tanks, then all bets are off. And we essentially provide an insurance policy against anything less than 6.5 percent. I'm very uncomfortable with that. The whole point of not allowing new hires into the defined benefit plan in the first place years ago was so that we could eventually shut it down, and now we're bringing more money in. So, I'm very uncomfortable with that. The reason why I voted on the last resolution is I thought there were extenuating circumstances where the givebacks and the productivity of the union were to such an extent that I felt could overcome my concern there, but I'm not at this point with this agreement.
Further discussion on this motion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltzamini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrak?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes, and I would like to extend our thanks on behalf of the council to all the members of MAP for their efforts on this and continued efforts on our behalf. On behalf of the citizenry. Consent agenda. Does anybody have any items they want removed?
J-2.
J-2. Any others? Okay. Could we have a resolution approving all items except J-2?
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltzamini, seconded by Councilman Howrak, that we approve all items on the consent agenda with this motion, except J-2 shall be considered after this motion. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltzamini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Councilwoman Beltzamini, you requested J-2?
I did request J-2. In reviewing the minutes of the regular meeting of May 9th, when you made your motion regarding draft language for a ballot proposal, the motion never was amended to include August. And the minutes, both as submitted and in the document, say, August. Part of the reason my questions did not get to management until 9:00 Friday night, where I spent an hour and a half listening to the webcast, because citizens can't fast-forward through it. So, I had to listen to it in real time. I listened to the entire discussion, and never did anyone amend your motion to add August. So, until that can be reviewed by the clerk and the city attorney, I don't believe that we should pass those.
I'm looking for that item. Just a minute.
It was a council referral, Madam.
Right. All right. I gotta get to it here. Just a minute. I'll go by pages. That'll be quicker. It's in the, it's in the resolution.
It is, and it does not belong in the resolution. That's my point.
No, it's in the minutes here.
That's right. And the minutes are wrong, is what I'm telling you.
Actual meetings. She said the minutes are wrong.
I don't have my old agenda from last week.
It had a blank, and you chose not to.
It didn't say August 2nd?
No.
Could've sworn I said August 2nd, but, well, we all, five voted for it and two didn't, so.
And my notes say no date selected.
We'll just postpone it. Just postpone.
Postpone the minutes till we can see?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I move that we take no action. You know.
All right. Okay.
Was my point.
I get it. Okay. I didn't listen to the, I don't watch and listen to after living it. Okay. Counsel?
It's a motion to postpone.
Motion to, do we need a motion to postpone that?
No.
That item?
No, because the minutes do require approval from the council, no approval will put them on the next.
All right. Okay. Next, the motion to, is council referrals, correct?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem Kerwin has an item.
You know, I gave it some thought. I didn't sleep well after. I know you had put forward, Madam Mayor, on your council referral to issues, roads had never been discussed, nor had there been a date, nor an amount. But I have given, I have grave concerns about us approaching another winter as we just had. We've just passed a budget, and we are ill-prepared, in fact, to do anything beyond that current policy regarding snow plowing. And we know that it would take $27 million, in fact, to move our roads to good. Now, one mill wouldn't move them to good, but we could be quick with our maintenance and absolutely have our 24-hour snow plowing. If I could, Madam Mayor, to the city manager, what would one mill do?
One mill would do the following, Your Honor, and members of council. Back in fiscal year 05-06, we had 28 full-time personnel in our Streets and Drains Division to take care of all of the streets and drains in the city. This budget has 21 full-time personnel, and the budget that was just approved goes down to 16 full-time personnel. If there was one mill that was approved, we could put back 12 full-time personnel in the budget for Streets and Drains, and essentially, as Mrs. Kerwin mentioned, we could have total maintenance of all roads in the city, including county roads, for what's known as maintenance. And that would include essentially a 24-hour protocol on snow removal for anything over four inches on all streets. It would include pothole patching, guardrails, drains, shoulders, gravel road maintenance, as well as crack sealing, and emergency slab replacements. That would cover about half a mill, about $2.2 million. The other $2 million could be used for slab replacements on county roads, and the big three there essentially are John R. Long Lake and Crooks. We could also, in addition, use monies to enhance our local road maintenance, which is now budgeted at $3 million. We could go to $4 or $5 million.
Before we discuss the resolution, we should really have a resolution on the table, so.
I'll move it.
Someone want a second to get it on the table for discussion? I will move, second to get it on the table for discussion purposes. I think that since it was brought up and we have had some communications from residents, both at the committee conversations and with the survey, and since it was mentioned by my referral last time from some emails we've gotten from residents, I think that council, we should at least discuss it and then talk about whether we want to also have it on placement on the August 2nd ballot, or if we want to do something else. So, I'd like to hear from council members with regard to this matter. Have you heard what Mr. Zerlag said about what one mill would do with regards road? And, yes, go ahead. It's your motion, so.
It is. I sense that there's an unwillingness to put it on the August ballot. I understand that. I think that at a further discussion, folks, we really need to come to grips with what we set in terms of our goals and how we want to position ourselves as a city. In so many ways, not only just in terms of public safety, we need to find a way to invest back into this infrastructure. It is not what it should be and not what it could be. So, if there is not an interest in placing it on the August ballot, I completely understand it. However, it is an issue of grave concern, and I think we're going to have to schedule a time to talk about how we intend to support a structure that is currently not serving us well.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltzamini?
I absolutely agree with that. I do have great reticence in putting it on the August ballot. Part of that being, we know that we are going to get additional information for budget and where we've saved, where we know we're going to have to spend more. I so appreciate Mr. Zerlag saying, you know, for half a mill, which we now know is what that is and what that looks like, this is what you get. And I think that's the kind of information we'd like to have for everything, you know, is what is it biased, what does it take? And these are the discussions we absolutely need to figure out. If we have another record-breaking winter, and how many hundred-year snowstorms have we had in the last 15 years? If we have another, how are we going to handle it? Because doing it badly again is probably not going to serve us well. But that was our decision, was to do it the best we could.
With the dollars we had.
Which was badly, you know? So, we do have to have the conversation. I absolutely agree with you, Mary. I just, I don't believe it's good for us to do it this quickly.
I sense that as going through that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I wanted to speak with regard to the matter, since I seconded the motion for discussion. I think it's important for us to have the discussion about this, but my concern is that we know there's money in the budget now for maintenance of roads and snow plowing. So, it wasn't as if it was at zero. There is money in there. The library budget was at zero. So, that was imperative that we get that on the August ballot for funding. This funding could be on another ballot, or we could find some other way that we're going to do. We've discussed several things, but I do think it's something that we need to explore. Maybe we want to have a study session on this particular item, which I think I'm seeing nods around the table on, because it was, wasn't it the second most requested item of all the ones that were there? And this is even people commenting on it now that we're out of the snow season. So, they're not just thinking about snow, they're thinking about potholes and just maintenance and, you know. They feel that it's impacting their property. Councilwoman Beltzamini, you've mentioned several times about people like to have a road in front of their house in good condition, you know? And since I'm on a corner, I like to have the main road in good condition and my street in good condition. And I think that it's important that we have a discussion on that. Do we have any, I don't know that we have, since I haven't heard from the other council members, enough to move a motion or if we want to withdraw the motion?
Mayor?
Councilman Slater? Maybe we shouldn't withdraw it till we hear from them.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of the motion, but I agree 100 percent with Councilwoman Kerwin that this needs to be addressed and should be our next goal. And I think we'll just have to determine how we're going to come up with the funding. And I think we'll know more about that come July 1st.
Okay.
No doubt.
Any other people want to comment? Then I'll call on Councilwoman Kerwin again. Oh, Councilwoman McGinnis, did you?
Well, I just wanted to put my thoughts out there. I think I would have to concur with the comments that have been made thus far. You know, the fact that the library had zero in their budget versus the amount of money that we have dedicated for these purposes that are outlined in here. Do I think it's enough? No. Do I think we need to have additional discussion about it? Absolutely, I do. I'm not sure if I'm ready to move forward and put it on the August ballot. I do think we need to focus on one thing at a time, and we will have additional information coming to us where we can determine the appropriate amount of money that will be needed. And I'm a little squeamish about taking over more than we had previously discussed from the county. I think that's something that we need to have an additional conversation about. I think it's kind of a fine line that we need to balance in terms of the things that we know our citizens want, the 24-hour snow plow, are willing to pay for versus this gray area, which would be things that are the county's responsibility. And I think it would be better for us to have a more in-depth discussion on that piece of it. I do think it was helpful to have the items listed out that half a mill would pay for, if that's the number, and that number may change after further discussion. But I think those are tangible things that we could pretty easily have a discussion about at council in terms of whether or not we want to put that question to voters. I just don't, I don't think that it's on the August ballot.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear you say that you want to talk about what we want to take on with responsibility with regard to county roads, because the Oakland County Road Commission does have a way to raise money if they want to for their roads, to take care of them. And I was the first one to say on council that we should be cutting back on, if they're not going to pay us the full amount to plow the roads. And again, they didn't. This past year, we just got the figures on what, how much was expended and how much the contract was for. And so, where does that extra money come from? Us, from our budget. So, I think that it's good that we're having somewhat of a discussion now, but I'd like to see us have something more extensive. Councilwoman Kerwin, did you want to withdraw?
I would like to withdraw it, if I may.
Okay. I'll support that.
Is that not right?
It's right.
Withdrawing the motion, is that correct?
The motion has been discussed, and it really is now the property of the table.
Okay.
So, it should be voted on or...
I could postpone it indefinitely.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilwoman Beltzamini?
I think that if this gets withdrawn, it goes away. And I would like to see a postponement to a date certain that would follow a study session. If we believe we're going to have better budget information for next year after the 1st of July, let's schedule it for the second meeting in July or the first meeting in August and get this done, and have this then put on the agenda for some time after that. But I, every time we withdraw something, it just kind of goes.
Dissipate.
Yeah.
Good point. I saw your face.
Good suggestion. Okay. Do you want to move a motion for that, to postpone it to the second meeting in July?
Mayor?
Yes. Counsel, I don't know if you were first. I think Councilwoman Fleming signaled before you spoke, so if you don't mind.
No, I don't mind.
Councilwoman Fleming?
Anyway, I agree. I think we definitely have to have a study session, and I'm looking to management as when the best time might be for that study session. Would it be maybe the first meeting in August? Get us through July? Get us past this ballot thing? And either August 8th might be a good time for study session. We'll just, definitely to.
Want to go to August?
It's up to you. August is fine.
Okay.
Madam, Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes, a question for the clerk. Does it literally have to be a date certain, or could it be when management can schedule a study session regarding this item?
A postponement needs to be the date certain or action certain.
Well, then, let's do that action center. So, I would postpone it until the city manager can schedule a study session regarding road maintenance and snow clearance.
Sure.
Okay.
That would be a motion, and I need a support.
I'll support that.
Moved by Mayor Protem Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Slater, was that it?
Yeah.
To postpone the item until management can schedule a study session on the item. Okay. The vote?
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman, Councilman Howrak, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, technically, the resolution's out of order, because I had asked for the floor first, and, you know, but whatever. You know, I think we need to play a little bit more nicely at this table here. The concern that I have, and I have a whole heap of them, is that the attitude on this council is that tax money is a blank check. My God, we're the fiduciaries of this city, and it's act like it. You know, I don't think that we need to have a tax resolution postponed to do this, you know? This is a bad resolution to begin with. Let's just kill it here and put it out of its misery, because the issues are, how do you use the funds that you have available, and how do you administer the policy that's in place better? Okay? Now, the secondary question is, if there's still not enough funding, how much will that cost? You've got all sorts of things under the sun in here, including, you know, adding 12 full-time people and doing this, that, and the other. Is the question winter maintenance, or is it all of this other stuff? Apparently, it's all this other stuff. To me, the major question at hand is winter maintenance. And the thing that's even more amazing is that since February of 2010, we've had the ability to put on the ballot a tax increase, and so we've waited and waited and waited. Now, they can't stop coming. They're coming from every single direction. You know, I'm thinking, why stop at one? Let's just make it an even five.
Mayor? I apologize for not calling on you after I called on Councilwoman Fleming, but I think that it was not done intentionally, Councilman Howrak. Councilman Slater?
By postponing it, I don't think anybody's saying they're in favor of a mileage. I don't know where that came from. It's just a courtesy that we're giving to somebody that proposed something like we did to Councilman Howrak today. So, by postponing it does not mean that I am in favor of it. It, just postponing it till later, till after we discuss everything.
Because there are various options that might be available, so. Okay. Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote on the postponement?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howrak?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltzamini?
Yes.
Motion passes. Counsel comments? Oh, I want to mention, I'll call on others in just a minute, but I want to mention that this Thursday is Police Memorial Day, when we all gather, weather permitting, I hope it's not going to rain, so that we can be outside in front of the police station for the ceremony. If it is raining, it'll be in here, and it's always very moving. And then, the awards ceremony is after, and members of the police department that have been chosen to be singled out as outstanding members of the year will be recognized, as well as others. So, I encourage people to follow that, and it will be, I think it's televised too after. It's always nice. Any other counsel comments or items that need to be brought up?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltzamini?
Once again, we will be observing Memorial Day. The Veterans Committee has planned another event, the 30th of May at 11:00 a.m., right here at the Veterans Plaza in front of City Hall. It's a wonderful time to pay respects for those who have given for the country.
Good. I'm glad you mentioned that. Thank you. Any others?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Recently, we talked about the communication strategy, and really, I don't know whether we need to direct staff in order to look at a communication strategy. Even in tonight's background material, for example, in covering the early retirement incentive, it included a communication piece. We know that it was one of the indicators that we heard from residents, both in terms of the conversations and also in the survey itself. I was reminded this evening even of our joint meeting with the Planning Commission, when we talked about, gee, just as soon as the zoning ordinance is passed, we would be getting all of that material out in terms of a communication strategy so that we could attract new development and so on. So, I don't know whether it would take a resolution, in fact, to authorize staff to do that, or direct, or how we would want to do that. It seemed like we had consensus at the last meeting, Madam Mayor.
I think there was consensus on the matter, but we didn't have any kind of vote, so I don't know whether, if staff feels that they need a resolution. I think it's one of the important pieces that frankly, I think citizens are asking us to do, is to make sure we're communicating even more with them. You know, whether they're for or against something, whether they're a proponent or an opponent, they're asking for that, you know?
Right communication.
That's what I hear, at least, from people. What do you think? Anybody? I see nods over here. I don't see, I don't know if anybody wants to say anything.
So, I guess.
Do you need a resolution, Mr. Zerlag?
I don't at this time. If there's a direction to get a strategy, you should know that I'll be going outside of city staff to secure one, though. And so, if the amount of that is over $10,000, I'll need to come back to city council in accordance with the charter and get a resolution at that point in time. But I wouldn't want to go out and develop, you know, proposals and then bring them to you, and then have the council say, what are you doing? We don't want this. So, if there's a...